Thank you for setting up the room to allow public viewing of the meeting. And thank you for doing it in here. I think it's a little bit more quaint in here and I like being around the table. We can see each other a little bit better. First item is discussion of the Fairhope Airport, which is not supposed to be on the agenda. So you can strike through number one. Just some miscommunication there. Sorry about that. If anybody was looking for that to be on here. That is not supposed to be on this agenda. Item number two, discussion of application to a decker for the land-water conservation fund program. Stacy and Sherri? Stacy or Sherri here?
Hi.
Okay. Jeff, is this what you needed to show on the screen? Is this what you had on the projector?
No.
Okay. All right.
What Stacy and I are here about is, as y'all know, we have applied before for the land-water conservation grants that would happen. And we have that opportunity again this year. These are a 50-50 match grant. And we have, we met with Mayor Wilson to talk about, you know, potential topics that we would like, or potential projects that we would like to submit. The one that we came up with was going ahead and hopefully completing out the soccer complex with pavilions, bleachers, additional sidewalks, and also some playground equipment. We are right now just kind of gathering information on cost and basically bringing it to you tonight to see if it's something that you'd like to move forward on.
So it commits the city to $150,000?
It could, up to $300,000. I mean, basically, y'all could set that budget if you wanted to. We can certainly come up with $300,000 worth of stuff to purchase.
Okay. Questions for Sherri or Stacy? Counsel? I guess my question is, I mean, and I'm not going to argue against it, but land-water conservation fund, and they can, you can spend those monies on a soccer complex?
We can spend it on recreation, yes, or we have before. As y'all probably remember, we did, we did the Atlanta Park. We made it accessible for ADN purchase. Bleachers, did a few other things up the park itself, too, and did that with land-water conservation grant. There's a few others that vote ranked down at Pierce Street. We've used those funds at the tennis center. So there's a lot of parklands apparent where we've used these funds.
So this is FY '16, so it would be received before October?
It could be. Stacy, do you?
Well, yeah, and this is actually the pre-application. So if we, you know, we would hopefully, the first of the year, get invited to present a full application. And then it would likely take, you know, several months for them to review those applications. So you're looking at the summer before we know.
We'll probably end up surrounding, to be honest, surrounding your budget for the budget year, how it did last time.
What is the long-range plan for the Rec Department as far as money set-asides for next, or for this year for the soccer complex?
We actually, this year in the Radmore's five-year plan, you know, we plan to complete, of course, hopefully, the soccer complex. We, I do not have anything budgeted other than what we've already spent at the soccer complex because I knew that, you know, moving forward, we spent a lot of money out there and that we would, right now, we're in the middle of the Willana Master Plan. So the next thing on the five-year plan is to complete manly, get it out of the way, and then start, complete the master plan at Willana and then start executing that plan. That will probably have to come in phases because it will be, again, a large renovation project of the baseball complex, the youth baseball complex. And then ultimately look at that whole piece of property going over to 98 to look at a full master plan and some other, you know, other plans out there. But we do need to finish manly. And at some point, we are going to be coming back because in order for us to, we can host the tournaments that we're hosting, and of course, we're building it for our rec league as they continue to grow. But if we are going to host any additional tournaments, we're going to need this, the bleacher city for 500, we'll need some additional space in the concession stand, press box areas, and dressing rooms. But those are all things that we're going to have to have to bid for larger tournaments and to compete with other communities for larger tournaments. So if we can get it for half the money, I mean, this is a good way to do that. It may be where we do this, this year and next year, we apply again and we finish out the concession stand, press box, and locker rooms. But this is stuff that we know we have immediate needs for.
All right, counsel, some feedback for Sherri?
When's the deadline for the application?
January the 6th.
You know, the bleachers aside, the fields are complete, concession stand is being built, but there's no, there's no money budgeted for sidewalks or, I know there's been talk about sidewalks and pavilions, but...
There is no money budgeted for that currently. Right now, there's one sidewalk in the plan for the soccer complex and it basically goes to the entrance and kind of makes a square around the concession stands that you have bathroom accessibility. We had originally in the original plan, and Councilman Morell will probably remember that, where we were in all areas of the park with sidewalks to make sure it was completely accessible, every field was accessible. Right now, with what we currently have planned, it's only limited accessibility. So, you know, this would, we've got to get some cost on sidewalks. Yes, this would allow us to expand that sidewalk plan more than what we had originally is in, is in the plan right now.
And, you know, accessibility is one issue, and then two is also protecting that investment because if you, you know, if it rains out there and you've got 500 people walking a path, then you're going to be out there reconstructing walkways and, you know, if it's not a hard surface, whether it's gravel or what, but, yeah.
It's going to be gravel.
If it's just gra, yeah, if it's grass, then...
Right.
I'm not saying it's got to be 150. I don't know what the cost would be, but...
Well, I know, but while you're making a money grab, you ought to grab all you can, I guess. But the problem is, is we'd, I'd like to know where we're at on budget at that time just to have some idea.
Yeah, because I think Deborah and Mayor Wilson have been working on, you know, the cost breakdown of what we spent so far out at the soccer complex. I think we're pretty, you know, close to budget, of course, on the contract part of it. So I'll look and read you those numbers if that's what you'd like to see. Like I said, I know the mayor and Deborah have been working on this.
Yeah, I know that we're going to be closer to budget on that. I just don't know what's going in the budget from here forth. But we're going to get to that real soon, so we'll find out. Jay, thoughts on that? Any thoughts?
I mean, I think it sounds like a good idea if we can get, I mean, $150,000 of money that, for projects that we are already going to have to do. Seems to make sense.
Yeah. But on these, on these pre-applications, you know, it doesn't bind you to it, but at the same time, it's not a good practice to apply and then be told that you received it and then go, "No, thank you." They typically frown upon that. So if you, if you say you're going to fill out the pre-application, you really need to be committed to the whole thing. So I'd like to be able to give, you know, Sherri and Stacy some direction tonight. We don't have to take a formal vote. We can take a straw poll and they can get started on the application because it's not anything, it's not binding.
Correct. Right, and we will read it before you have the next council meeting. And it does require a public appearance, so we'd like the soccer community to know that if they want to come and speak in favor of that, they can. It's all, all part of the application process. We'll have firm numbers and firm information to come before you have the next meeting. But I do think that we can fill that $150,000 with no problem at all.
Yeah, I'm not worried about filling it. I'm worried about paying for it. I'm in favor of going with, for the full amount myself.
I'm in favor.
I'd be in favor of it.
$0.50 on the dollar, you can't beat that deal.
Seriously, that's good, that's good?
Okay. All right. So it's unanimous that we would support that.
Fifty percent off sale.
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you, Stacy. Okay, Mayor Wilson, 90-day budget.
Well, it's very easy. Right now, we're going to freeze spending to the 2016 level for 90 days, and that's for operating. What I have done is I looked through the budget for each department, and then when I started talking to the department heads, I started realizing that there's a lot in the budget that never made it to the file that was on my desk. So I asked every department head to bring the original file that they gave in September, and that's what I'm going through now and meeting with, I'm going to meet with each department head and also go over the large expense items to see, you know, how that affects our expenses and income. There is, I mean, I can give a lot of detail here, but you might want to wait on it. But there, I've put together a two-man financial advisory crew. I'm not sure if they're here or not, but they have been really, really helpful in helping me identify some reporting issues that I need to look into to figure out the true financials for just the government end. Because I don't want to look at utilities. Utilities needs to be separate and reports separate. I want to see where the city is. And right now, it has not been reported that way, so...
Mayor, I want to know, do you have any major expense items? There are going to be some items that we have to pay for, obviously, next year.
Right, oh, yeah.
Is there anything that you desire to include in that other than just freezing the budget at 2016?
It's not, all it is is...
Is there anything that we know that we're going to need that might hinder our work in the next 90 days?
Oh, no, I don't think it's, it's hindering. The only questions that have come up are just regular spending. And if there is anything that is critical, then we can address it immediately.
You can always bring it up, piece by piece.
Right. But the, the only item on there that we're not going to do right now, not that we're not going to do it at all, but the 2% cost of living right now, we want to do merit-based and implement that starting immediately. And that would be a big, it's over quarter million. We also want to, whatever is in each department, I don't want to just say, "Oh, no, we can't do it." I want to budget it out for the next five years. Because a lot of it that was given, we don't want to just say no anymore. We want to say, "Okay, if this is something we really need, then this is how we're going to do it, and this is the order of priority." And then verify the, the critical budget numbers in each department. And we have gone through this, but like I said, without talking a lot of specifics, but we're going to be talking about it because we're going to report it from here on out. This is what the city, these are the financials for the city of Fairhope. These are the financials for our utilities. And the reason we have to do that is because if you really don't know what you're looking at and it's mixed together, you never know what you're going to need in the future or how we can improve at each department. And that's just how it's been reported for, I think, a long, 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 long time. And we have to separate those out. And I'm sure you agree, too.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to that, that we do, you know, we do get reports based on every department and based on every utility, and it is broken up from general government and utilities. But I wouldn't argue that, you know, the certain things have been placed maybe in certain departments for various reasons, then maybe they should go on in another department.
Yeah, I mean, it's, right now, it's not going to the proper departments. So we will separate that out. And I asked Department Blackman and Kilgore also that I want that done this year. But I'm also going to have to fix it or at least show where it has been the last eight years or so. So we know that if it is a deficit, you know, how is that trending? And this will also, we would be able to say, this is why we need to have income, you know, we can identify the things that are, you know, taxing our city.
Okay. Questions for Mayor Wilson? Does anybody have any druthers that they would like to consider because as a counsel, you do have the right to consider other expenditures that you might need, or, same token, you could cut expenses if you wanted to. So is there anything that's, that's pressing on your mind that you feel like, and we're not voting on this tonight...
I just wanted to give an update because the thing in December said we would extend it until December. But I also wanted to say that PARCA, which is P-A-R-C-A, it is a municipal study done through Sanford. It really is kind of just a comprehensive study of all departments, including financial. We're going to get a meeting with them on the 19th. We're going to do an online budget simulator. This is an online tool that would allow city leadership to simulate changes in revenue and expenditures. Salary analysis of city positions. We had in the budget already $50,000 to look at personnel pay ranges. We try to do that every four to five years. It was in this year's budget.
And that, then we might be able to delete that cost?
Well, this is what is all included in it. It's very good.
Now, do we have to pay Sanford?
Yeah, but I'm going to get to that. So we have the salary analysis, and then we also have the administrative study. And this is a comparison of this city's organizational structure and administrative operations to national best practices. And they will also evaluate best practices. And I went over that with our auditor today, and there's a lot of things I think we can do to better do the internal practice. This would normally cost over $100,000 with a private company, and we already had 50 just for salary analysis, and we're getting so much more. And this will be around $35,000, so...
One thing I've got is to make sure we got the money in for the, we don't want to let that painty of the water tank go by.
The paint, we already discussed that we're not doing it this year. Because it has to be something that you bid out and that process will take...
We missed the time, remember?
No, no, I know, but for next, we've got to get an engineer started this year, though, in order to do it for the next year after set.
Yeah, we talked about maybe selecting one in the first, you know, quarter of the year so that we'd be ready to start in the fourth quarter of the year.
I'm just saying to make sure we have that in the budget. I don't want it to slip by again.
Well, it would be a budget item for 2018.
We do need to get that painted.
Well, no, yeah, we had to get the professional services done. February, March, April timeframe of this year.
I'll say physically, '17, obviously, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be of '17.
Right.
Yeah.
We're working on a lot of really unbelievable things that the department heads are actually going to start discussing at every council meeting, the good news, you know, in each department. And we're not doing all of them at once, but we're starting some of the things that, you know, we're going to be identifying. A lot of it's coming from them directly and things that we're going to be able to be a lot more efficient. And that overall savings will be significant, I think, throughout the whole year.
Okay. Is everybody okay? Would you like this, are you wanting to put this 90-day budget, which is basically to extend 2006 levels for another 90 days, is just a simple resolution that we've already done?
2016, you said, 2016.
2016. I ran out of breath.
We might have, if it was 2006, we might have more money to work with.
Better have anyway.
2016.
I only put it on here because the next meeting on the 22nd, I think, will, will be inspired from the previous. I just wanted...
Yeah, but either way, we can do it either way. We can put it on the next one. So does anybody else have any concerns about that? I mean, when I say be thinking about other things, you know, you've got things such as EAC, which is, you know, looking for their funding and, you know, things like that.
That's already, that was in the budget, but it was in a...
It hasn't been passed.
Right, but I mean, it was $700,000 in community development, which was buried in utilities, which was...
Well, it was actually cut to 510, and then there's been other discussions of different amounts. So it's something that counsel needs to consider. If, if they come to us and they want that, then we have to always consider that. But, yeah, it was, it was down to five. The last discussion, that budget that was proposed by Mayor Cannon, it was actually reduced to 510.
Okay. It's not reflecting in the budget that I have, but we will...
Yeah, and we were redlining it as we were having our work sessions. So it may not have been updated, may not have been typed in there, but even, even former councilwoman Brewer that was pushing for that had reduced it to the 510.
Right, but that means the main thing we have to do, and I'm going to get the audit from, you know, Hartman, Blackman, and Kilgore, but is, we have to clean up the way that we're reporting these things so it's more transparent. And these things take time. I mean, I'm going to do as much as I can, you know, to try to do, you know, but there's a lot to work on.
Okay.
So...
Any questions? Counsel members?
Go ahead.
Questions? Jay, any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Not on the budget. I mean, there's other items, but I'll talk to y'all later. We'll put it on the, the next one.
Okay. Discussion of flooding issues. Mayor Wilson?
Well, what we're going to do with this is there's going to be a presentation from some of our department heads, and we put together this really high-tech presentation this afternoon that we're going to talk about. But I think the first one, just let me look to it. Okay, the first one is sewer, actually, first map, but y'all can just come up here together. Jennifer and, y'all can talk together. Y'all want to just bring up the chairs right here or, because you have... Well, you want to do the first one? First slide?
Sewer, I was just going to give them.
Then that's fine. Do that. Okay.
The city's experienced tremendous, tremendous development pressure over the past three months especially. We've seen a steady increase in development applications over the past three years. It's been very difficult to keep up with lately, but we, we've been doing it and staff continues to do our best to make sure things handled appropriately, properly. You can see our map here. You see those colored areas? Those are areas inside the city of Fairhope. Those areas outside the city of Fairhope that you see within our planning jurisdiction, which is within that bold red line, those areas are also areas the city of Fairhope is responsible for as far as a lot of utilities are concerned, and also watershed management. And, you know, drainage infrastructure is important in those areas when we have developments that are considered. And our utility infrastructure is very important in those areas, even though they are outside of the city's corporate limits. We always have to consider the public, the public's health, safety, and welfare, you know, when we're dealing with new developments. At this point, I believe we will take a step back and look at our stormwater infrastructure, not just within the city limits, but also outside of our city limits in our planning jurisdiction. We're responsible to those citizens within our planning jurisdiction to make sure we address pertinent issues such as stormwater facilitation and utility infrastructure issues. And those seem to be the two hot topics these days that we're dealing with. Of course, we would like to update additional regulations and look into our zoning ordinance, our subdivision regulations, our comprehensive plan, and various other documents that relate to transportation, things like that, that the city depends on to make wise decisions regarding development. I just wanted to kind of open up at this point and say it's time for us to make considerations regarding, regarding stormwater facilitation and especially our city's infrastructure regarding utilities. That's why at this point, I would like to hand it over to Dan, and he can give you more specifics about what we are having issues with regarding his, his utility system, which is water and sewage.
One of the things, as Charles has alluded to, once the growth, you look where the word sewer is written on, there's a line that runs to the top. It goes all the way, the map's cut off, but it goes all the way to Indy County Road 1, all the way to Fish River. You see the bottom says Ballin County Sewer. We're treating those people in Fish River as Ballin County Sewer. That's the cutoff line that everything on that map, it's 20 lift stations that pumps to one eventually down in front of the warehouse. That represents 30% of the lift stations I have. I have 68. So that's 30% that's coming to that one lift station. It's imperative that we get that lift station up and upgrade it. The city just spent almost $11 million, actually the council members, the new council members, we spent almost $11 million upgrading this to the sewer treatment plant to a state of our facility. Now we got to work on the infrastructure on getting that sewer transported there. The second one is down there at the bottom, this is Thompson Hall. That lift station was put in when the golf course was actually built in Quail Creek. That station was designed only for Quail Creek. But now there's 12 lift stations that pump to it. That sewage is all conveyed eventually to the sewer treatment plant. So we need to get that one. That's the other one that's imperative that we get upgraded also. The lift station that's down there that the 20 pump to is pumping 650 gallons a minute. That lift station pumps every four to six minutes. It should only pump about four times an hour, is really all it should pump. It's pumping every four or six minutes. Well, just recently, between last year's span and this year, we put in SCADA system, and that's information that we can see every time this thing cuts on, it's plotting for hours, and it keeps up with it every minute. It keeps up every time it cuts on and off. And in the span of time that a lift station ran, that's a tremendous, tremendous amount of runtime. And a 24-hour period, those lift stations operated 440 times yesterday. That's a tremendous amount of sewage. The other ones that you see are simply up to the upper right, which is North Section Street. That handles everything from Rock Creek South along the other quarter of those lines that you see. At the very top, or it's hard to see because it's inverted, it says Firefly, then it cuts around, and then flows to North Section Street. Now, that lift station is sitting down there by what used to be Ag Moore's Engineering just a little bit south, excuse me, just a little bit north, that's the lift station sits there. The rest of it is either gravity flows to the treatment plant from there. But as you see, if you add all those up, it's, it doesn't take long, because we've grown at such a rapid pace, that the collection system is now, and a couple of these areas has gotten at its capacity. So we definitely need to get this done, especially when we're looking at 30%, well, one lift station is 30% of the lift stations are pumping to one. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So when you have those 20 lift stations going to one, are they in series or are they in parallel? So is it all going into, say, you're saying it's going into one, but I mean, what about the one just prior to that? Does it have 19 going into it and the one before that going 18 or 17?
No.
Are there 20 lines going into one station? Are they all independent?
They're all eventually make their way, some will make it to another lift station downstream. Some pump to that line, to a line that the other lift station is pumped to. Ultimately, they all come to a line that runs down Section Street that runs all the way to Roar, what used to be the old Roar building. And there's other lift stations that tie into that line, not necessarily in series, but they're, I guess you'd consider independent of each other, but they all tie into it and eventually make it to that.
So the, so the one that 20 tie into, where is it, where is it located in here?
It's got a corner on it, full red button. You look, raise this lift station right here, it comes right down, right there.
Okay. So it's closer, much, much closer to the plant, at least?
Yes, the plant says, I see where it says plant, the plant sits right there. So it pumps up the street, up Section Street, it dumps in a manhole, it fails in Church Street, and then gravity flows all the way down to the plant directly.
So, you know, I can understand the lift station capacity. What about the pipes from that station to the plant itself? Does it, does it have the capacity, if the lift station has the capacity or...
What we need to look at is, I think on the agenda, we have a utility study. This is something that needs to be looked at, is what is actual capacity currently? What is reserve capacity is? And then is there any future capacity that we need to build for at our current growth rate? Because we're experiencing a tremendous amount of growth rate.
What, what kind of timeline would we be looking at at fixing something? I mean, upgrading a station, how long does that take?
The study, to answer, to back into that question, the study's going to take probably four months to do aggressively, to do it right. And once that's developed, that plan is developed, bring that to the council with a cost estimate, and then we move in a budget. And what I'm looking, what we're, I say, what we need to have is a five- and 10-year plan on our infrastructure growth. So then when the council, every year, they pull the document out, add in the equation, and then budget, and then do those things that it takes to get that done at a prescribed time. To answer your question, it's going to depend on what all the engineers, when they find out what all... what all has to be done, four to six months probably.
Four to six months to fix it after the, at least four months?
That would include probably your bidding process, getting it out, getting on the street, get the contractor in. Done, I think, would you agree with that?
This study, I'm sorry. This study will probably take three to four months, and then the documents, all depending on what you're saying, it could be some major upgrades to that. So it could be.
Four to six months to implement the upgrades?
To do the study. Years to probably implement upgrades.
You're probably talking this time next year.
To be through with it or to get it started, to start construction?
We need to get started today.
No, no, I know, but I mean, to get started on construction would be this time next year if we started today.
Possibly, possibly, it just depends on how, much information they're requiring, how quickly we can get it to them, they can get the analysis done, get it back and get that information back to y'all so y'all can make an informed decision. The key thing is make sure we get it right, get it budgeted, and do it in a timely fashion.
So what's our plan in the meantime as far as development in those areas? I mean.
Right now, I can't sign off on any more development until we get this done. I mean, I just can't do it. I think the whole thing is put moratorium on, if you're asking for that in order of words, is to put moratorium on until we get past the study to see what we need to do.
What I was going to mention too, the study that I bid out and chose was for a baseline study, that would take 45 days. All a baseline study is going to do though is just tell you exactly where you are right now. But, I mean, there's going to be more to it than that, but that's a 45-day. And I have the, more of the details here.
What are you going to do about that, when you say you're not, are we providing sewer to like Battles Trace and Firethorn or the new projects that we've approved, the first phases of the planning zone?
I think what we need to do is sit down this year and find out how long the build-out is on that and see if we can, I guess it's going to take them a year to build it, then we'll be, they'll be right in front of how long is what we're doing.
Correct. That's why, you know, basically, been approved on one aspect and then being shut down on the second phase of the planning of it, that's not going to be real good for us at all.
That, a moratorium doesn't apply to things that have already made it through the planning process.
Correct. Dan, did we not see this coming a year or two ago? I mean, I know that you've been talking about this some, but Kevin had been talking about this, but that was more of stormwater getting into, it was freshwater getting into our sewer treatment system and making its way to the plant. With all this construction going on, all this development going on, how come we weren't talking about this two, three years ago?
Uh, it was talked about two or three years ago. It was talked about.
Mr. Dan, we do a lot of development work, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interfere, but I can kind of jump in on this. We did a lot of development-type work or commercial work and all that with the city. And all along, Dan has been trying to implement a program with the city, knowing that the sewer system hasn't been upgraded in 20 years. It's just now we got a, a very council who's listening that we need to start doing something. I'm just being honest about it.
Maybe it wasn't brought to the council, really.
Well, I think what happened is when you decided to do the upgrade, you evaluated that and then the cost of doing a new system. When was that?
You're talking about sewer treatment plant?
Mm-hmm.
Sewer treatment plant was studied by a fund called CH2.
No, the $11 million project, that was done?
That was sewer treatment plant.
Okay, sorry.
That was the sewer treatment.
Okay, and so when was that, that was done?
Got the study, it was done, uh, let's see, that was the 60s, so 2011.
Okay.
So once the study was done, then the engineer was hired to implement that plan.
So that was in 2012?
Correct.
Okay.
So it took a toll of about five years to get across.
Right, but at that time, y'all presented, you know, something that we can get by with now with an upgrade, you know what I mean? And then didn't y'all have a proposal for a whole new system? That was my understanding.
I've never seen anything.
I know what she's talking about. We had looked at one point in time of building the sewer treatment plant south of town.
Okay.
All right, that got shelved because of the extreme cost at that particular time versus taking the existing sewer treatment plant and modernizing it with modern technology, green technology, state-of-the-art technology in there. The cost was like a little more than double.
Right, but probably something that.
Well, let's just be, I'll be clear, the sewer treatment plant is not the issue. The sewer treatment plant has more than enough capacity.
It's the collection.
50%, correct, is the collection of system.
So if you do this baseline study and you determine that, I guess different lift stations have different capacity loads as well?
That's right.
So if you find out that some lift stations are fine, I'm not saying they're going to be fine, but say they have capacity and others are at max capacity, would you then, would a moratorium be in place on just the ones that are affected by that particular line and the others would be other than available? Or how, would you just have to do it across the whole planning jurisdiction?
You can't discriminate when it comes to sewer. I know that sounds weird, but you can't do it.
Nobody gets hooked up or everybody gets hooked up.
But we're talking, we're going to talk about the sewer, and then of course Jennifer wants to also talk about stormwater runoff, which is.
Questions for Dan?
When you say you can't discriminate with sewer, if you do a moratorium, I mean, aren't there certain, can't you target certain?
Well, what we.
Building with the moratorium?
What we talked about this afternoon is when I emailed y'all, in my mind, I'm thinking 60 days, that would allow us to look at our regulations, that would allow us to do a lot of things. But then when I sat down and talked to the planning, they said, well, everything that's already come through planning, including what's happening in January, because we've received them in, nothing would apply to that. So they could stay busy between now and the next 60 days with what we've got, you know, in place right now. So, right, and it is too, because we need to, I think, update our whole application process to something that is, it's not that it's more strict, it's really that we're enforcing what we already have. If we don't have a complete application, then it's kicked back. It's not going to go on an agenda when it's not complete. I mean, the whole process really just needs to be analyzed. But in order to have time for that, it's going to take more than 60 days, not something I emailed y'all, but this is, you know, after really discussing everything today, that to have time not accepting any applications, to really work on looking at every, all of our regulations, you know, completing this study, which would be 45 days for the baseline, we have to allow ourselves time with everybody in the planning department, an urban planner, you know, bringing everybody in, you know, experts in that field and saying, this is what we really need to have in place to protect our citizens. And when it comes to sewer and, you know, the collection there, I mean, there's also that potential health risk. And we don't want that, we're not there, but it's absolutely something we have to plan ahead for. And really, the can has been kicked down the road, unfortunately, for a while now, so.
But in talking about a moratorium, and I'm not really talking about the moratorium as much as I am Dan saying that they couldn't really authorize any new sewer hookups in some of these areas. I mean, some of these things have already, and I think, I think you answered my question right, but I want to make sure I understood it. Things that have been approved in planning and zoning already, we can't come back now and say, we've approved you and you started, but now we're going to withhold sewer service?
I think the answer to that is to get to allow them to move forward, because it's going to be a year probably before they start building the first house. By then, we've long been doing the study, know what we've got to do is start implementing those things before it really has a big effect. One house is not going to hurt, 200 houses might.
Right, right.
But by the time they get to that point, we should already have done what we need to get.
And that'll be something that the city and engineers for whatever, whichever of these developments are that would be the most affected by this, that's something y'all will work together on and figure out. Okay.
But, I mean, we can ask more questions.
A base study, basically what we, I mean, in a nutshell, we need to establish what problems we have with the existing lift station manholes and pipe work to get to the plant.
Correct.
Then we need to establish a fix for these problems that were done, and then we need to establish a cost for this fix.
Correct.
Is that basically the three main items?
I would think yes, I would think that's the way to approach it.
Now, under this base study, which one of these, I mean, does it do all three of these or does it just do one?
What this base study will do is written report, including recommendations for improving the operation of Fairhope's Public Utility Department.
Now, when you say to tell you, that also water, gas?
It's gas, water, and sewer. We actually already have electric that we did in June.
Right.
Let's see here, it's a long memo, let me. They'll meet individually with the utility department managers and lead personnel to look at the infrastructure in the field as well as review existing files and system mapping. This effort may require talking with Fairhope's current consultants, which I know that we've done the 2011, files and system mapping. Furthermore, the current rate structure. The current rate structure for each utility in most recent three years of financial statements will be evaluated, which I think is really important, because right now, when I was talking about the budget, we're putting budget figures together, and then when you get the actual, it's very different. We have to identify, how are these numbers, how are we even projecting these numbers? If they're all sometimes 17%, I mean, that's a problem, if it's over or under, to be off that much. So when you say what the budget is, I mean, I do think we have to have that part analyzed. And what figures are going in there to, you know, come up with these numbers?
Okay. Well, this is item 14 on tonight's agenda.
This is probably the biggest one, but yeah.
We can also, you know, discuss it more in that meeting as well. Does anybody have any questions for Dan, the mayor, concerning this?
Thanks, Dan.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I want to talk to you a little bit about storms. This, or this, we took a, back in 2014 when we had our large rain event, April 29th, you all remember it, April 14th, we had another large rain, two weeks prior too, our largest one on April 29th. But these were some of the expressions that we actually got from the public. I'm seeing lots of water. I can't tell you how many times I've said the word sinkhole. You know, eight weeks later or three months later, I was still heard hearing sinkhole. I was like, am I hearing sinkhole one more time? But washout, my home's flooded, overflowing with water, severe erosion, and these, it's a little bit blown up here, but these, we've got eight different watersheds that we were receiving complaints from. And we actually, actually took a Excel spreadsheet and organized every work request in that time period by watershed. So we know where our issues are, and actually being a work director now for 15 years, I can tell you, you know, almost off the top of my head, we've got major infrastructure issues on fields, on Fairhope Avenue, on White Avenue, on Bancroft.
What's the most sensitive watershed?
The most sensitive, the one we received the most damage in. Because most sensitive, you know, could be.
Well, most, needs the most work, I guess.
The one we received the most damage in was Haywood. We did walk through the gullies, we did, you know, see the damage that it was.
Was that during the April rains? Is it fair to compare everything to a 500-year rain though?
Well, that is a pretty good test. It'll tell you where your issues are. The sinkholes that we have, most of them were in those streets I just mentioned, because a lot of that infrastructure has aged so much that we've actually worn out the bottoms
I don't dispute that we have water, you know, we have flooding issues and infrastructure issues, but if we're going to try to solve our infrastructure issues based on, and I heard, Kevin, you say thousand-year?
Five thousand, yeah.
Five thousand, nine hundred, thousand.
Be reckoned, you won't see that storm again for, in our lifetime, that's not necessarily the case. But that storm is one of a kind right there.
It's just, we're looking at something that may never be solved.
That's true.
And no amount of money that we could ever spend would solve all the issues of that rain.
True, absolutely.
I think it's important to know that right now, just with the regular rain, we have serious problems though. So that's really.
But I don't want every issue, I don't think we can solve every issue based on that April 2014 event.
No, this is just what she put together for the study.
Yeah, I just pulled that together as a way to organize myself and my thoughts and our work as a response to the storm. But it gave us a good, it gave me a good, like an inventory of what our issues were. Now, these were, these were a few more things that we saw. One of the issues though, as we build, that we've got to keep in mind, some of these watersheds are totally encompassed, you know, in our city limits that are built out. So as we grow and we're taking the cottage off the double lot or the ranch home off the triple lot, and we're demolishing it, and we put the expanded house, let's just not say overbuilt home, on the single lot, we are increasing the impervious amount of storm, you know, that's impervious amount of water is not able to go into our stormwater system because it was built on a 10-year rain event or a 25-year rain event, or back when we had, those stormwater regulations were right for the time, but not, you know, not planning on having, you know, these large homes and a lot of imperviousness on one lot. We're getting that increased stormwater, and all you have to do is ask the people at the end of the watershed, at the bottom of the watershed, and they'll tell you there's a change. There's, it's a difference. And you just have to talk to them, drive down the street, they'll stop you and tell you all about it. But another issue is, you know, our rights of way too. You know, we're having a hard time making sure even the ditches are being dug out and culverts are not, the driveways are being put over places where a culvert needs to be. And that's stuff that we need to handle internally too.
Senator, I'm a, or a, sorry for that. You know, back in 2000, city, back in 2007, the city took a very proactive approach and amended our subdivision regulations to require an operations and maintenance plan for stormwater facilitation. You might not see results from that right away. I mean, it's been 10 years. I think we will see results from us putting in those additional requirements in the next 20 to 30 years. But stormwater facilitation is one of those things, you're not going to fix it overnight. And, you know, to be in the development business anymore, no, you're not going to do it unless we come in here with millions or billions of dollars and start building regional stormwater facilities where everything just flows into big beautiful lakes and everybody can fish around and.
It sounds wonderful.
Enjoy it, but you know, that's kind of a fine, a fine sky idea. But as we make these small proactive steps, I believe our stormwater issues will be handled appropriately for the future. We've got to just make steps now to try to, you know, better our infrastructure and make sure the things coming in and the developments that are being proposed have adequate stormwater facilitation. Times do change, we've been given more rain, it seems, than we've ever gotten. And like Jennifer mentioned, in 2014, we had that beloved of a rain on April 29th, that was just a freak storm. I don't know how often that might happen. You know, there's a little proactive things, if we can make regulatory adjustments and amendments with the help of our engineering community, I think would definitely help in the long run for the city, for the City of Fairhope and, you know, not only our residents in corporate limits, like I mentioned, the residents outside of the city that rely on us in our planning jurisdiction to make sure we make. on us in our planning jurisdiction to make sure we make responsible development decisions for them.
And we need to do it, you know, right along with Baldwin County. They, they spent a lot of money on studies, you know, and they came and did a presentation for us several months ago. They talked about the timing issue and, you know, how would either a, any big building at that 100-year rain event, closer you are to the river or the water source, perhaps, you don't need to build to any type of rain event. And they talked about the timing, how, how long it takes to get to the river, and our pace may be to the bay, and how we need to make sure that water gets there faster because if you have the retention pond built at the 100-year rain event, and you hit that 100-year rain event, it all comes down at one time, and then everybody floods instead of letting out a 50-year rain event at one time. I know Mr. Baker remembers that conversation a little bit, but that was, what, 10 months ago, a year ago maybe, they were here talking to us? And that, some of our things, whatever we do, you know, we need to make sure that's coordinated, their, their information. But, you know, for inside our city limits, you know, we do have those, that we might need to really take a hard look at.
When we talk about putting a little bit of money in the budget each year to try to tackle a section at a time, you know, there's not enough money in the world to handle it all at one time. And like Jonathan said, and I said, you know, it'd take billions of dollars to solve a, you know, an April 29th flooding issue. But those smaller ones, I think that we need to put, you know, money in the budget every year to take care of, you know, these particular sections.
We're still working on some of those work requests in 2014.
Yeah, we all got the phone calls. I mean, there was no end to them, to the calls.
Yeah, it's, they're still being worked on, and there's things that we have not forgotten about and we're going to get to, even if it's, you know, we're doing a little bit of time. Now, Mayor, did you want to do the next one?
I mean, there was another one, you know. There, that's, that's what we're getting. And then the next one is mine. And you have to, you know, one more.
Is there, is there somebody looking into a study as far as this drainage?
We do not, and ultimately, I would think that we would probably need to take each watershed and look at it and just study. We did do some work. Trey Genrod actually did some work for us back several years ago, did a whole, the entire Valana Gully watershed, and it's still on our website. And I would think we would need to do something like that. Maybe Tatumville was probably our next biggest one. And I said, you know, Fly Creek, the last, when we did our Valana Gully watershed, and we worked with Mobile Bay National Issuery Program, we had that $50,000 grant, I can't remember, 2007. It's been a while.
We, we actually, I had Neil Shaker perform stormwater analysis in OSA before we updated the subdivision regulations. We had a baseline as far as the data was concerned to implement the regulations that they recommended. So, we have some baseline data, and that's not a part of what Jennifer was just mentioning, but we do have some tools already in our toolbox to work with to get started, but we do need someone to take a look at it, look at all of the things we've had done over the years, and come up with a new, you know, I know the words you use so much, but comprehensive approach to stormwater management.
Right. And one thing I remember from the, when they had the four proposals for the comprehensive plan, the most extreme scenario for, I think it was Christopher Baker talked about going in and targeting, you know, watersheds and being able to go in there with a piece of property where the city bought it from a owner and built a retention pond for that watershed to, because right now, everything's a surface drain and eventually into a too small pipe.
Yeah. That's what's happening in Fruit Nut.
To try to catch it before it gets there, you know, if the city, you know, has to go in, it's going to be a lot cheaper than putting in underground drainage from...
And we looked at something like that, Trey had mentioned that, in the Valana Gully watershed, that there's actually properties along that watershed where you could actually do some of that park lands that we could, you know, create and that sort of thing. I think each, you know, individual watershed really needs to be studied and kind of looked at and seen. Tatumville's probably our next biggest, and Mobile Bay NEP is going to tell me Fly Creek is. And Mobile Bay NEP asked me to work on Fly Creek as our next project. But Tatumville is probably...
Which one is Tatumville?
That's where, the one that goes through the, down below the warehouse. It comes through middle.
By the shop. The gully.
The big ditch by the car, the wooden roof.
Comes from Nichols.
That's where it all goes out.
Comes from your home, your new home.
Right. See, I helped that. I took out nine, probably subs, and got rid of them, and I only put one back.
You're a rarity.
I helped the cause.
I want to let y'all know FEMA has offered me a sneak peek at what our new flood maps are going to look like when they go preliminary in August of 2017. Right now, Kalpen Creek and our creek beds are not legally designated as flood zones by FEMA. They have designated all those creek beds now. So, we're going to have people in Spring Lake and Hawthorne Glen and Fairfield that houses are now going to be flood zones that were not in previously in designated flood zones. So, a lot of what Jennifer's talking about with these gullies and these creek beds are formally going to be on our FEMA maps when we get them next year, and they never have been before.
Well, if that wasn't emergency enough, can you take it to the next slide? That's the future map. Just kidding. I mean, it is all red because we are there. What I'm recommending is that we push this to the agenda as a moratorium. We did look at a moratorium, I think about a month ago, and there was ordinance put together from Jonathan to do a six-month moratorium, which I felt like, even in the beginning, I said, "Let's not do a moratorium, let's work, you know, try to do the studies and see what we can do." But since that conversation, we've been inundated, and to the point of, even if we bring in more help, all planning is going to be doing is reactionary, trying to keep up with what's coming in. We can no longer do that because we have to take the time to figure out what we have to do and where we are. We have to have that breather. I mentioned to y'all, maybe doing a 60-day, but the next 60 days is just going to be keeping up with what's, has already, you know, been submitted. And we have 472, is it, I guess it lots, or on the planning, the January planning. We have 1,200 roughly in the Pike, which is, I think, close to a quarter of what we approved last year.
Yeah.
Okay. This is to give you an idea of where we are right now. It's significant, and we already have significant problems. So, my recommendation is that, you know, we do, it's going to be up to y'all, but 60 days, don't even think we would get close to finishing what we need. Six months, hopefully we could, but we've got to review the study on the collection of sewer. We have to. We've got, we have to review our drainage regulations, review really just all of our regulations that we put in place for new development, particularly high-density development. Because right now, the studies that we are putting forth are not, I don't think they're good enough. And some of them, we're not even enforcing. You know, I mean, a traffic study, and we let them use a traffic study that was received from Baldwin County to put up a traffic light. I mean, we have to be better with new development to protect our citizens. And we have to look at the application process and public participation. I want public participation and the public to know about development when our utilities find out. Why not? We, we're in the 21st century, there's a very easy way to communicate with our citizens. They want to know. So, putting all these things in place, we're going to be able to grow better and put better regulations in place to protect our citizens. I feel like we need to push this forward to the meeting, the council meeting. I think six-month moratorium may be the way to go. And I said moratorium, Jay, so this is the first time I've said it legitimately, since I've been quoting, saying it for a long time, but haven't.
And you're proposing to push that to tonight's agenda?
Yes. Because you wait two more weeks, or it's not even two weeks, on the 22nd, then you've got two more weeks' worth of pushing applications through that really aren't even complete. And then come, you know, January, you're going to already have February's agenda ready for planning. I mean, honestly, we've already been talking about a moratorium since the election, and I think that was probably part of the problem, you know, instead of saying moratorium, we probably should have said, "We're going to do these studies." But since it, we did bring it up, I think every day we wait now is a day late, dollar short.
Do you have one drawn up?
We're going to use the one that we had for October, or was it October or September?
September.
And that was presented, it was presented and, it was submitted, and we talked about it, what meeting? That would have been in November, so getting into November.
Yeah, we talked about it in our first council meeting, right, November, September.
So, we've had that announced and advertised properly and all of that, so we could put another one in place if you wanted to, but because that one has been out there, I think it's the prudent thing to do.
I think that there was some discussion as to whether or not that was exactly the type of moratorium that we wanted to put out there, was it, were we wanting to stop everything, we wanted to stop large-scale projects?
It has, it has exceptions in it. The exceptions on your moratorium?
Yes. There were some exceptions, there, you know, applications that are in the pipeline as far as if they're in, in our office for preliminary flat approval, then they can move forward.
Is that in your email?
It's in, is, well, this is what we actually decided today, so this is different because it's already been advertised. It's what y'all had and received our first meeting, the moratorium that he put together.
So, you know, preliminary flats, multi-occupancy project reviews that have already been submitted can continue on. That is, if they're deemed complete applications, which we tried to, you know, as a transition from what we have done in the past, of course, things were handled differently. And I think the direction we're going now is probably more appropriate to handle things because we haven't been accepting things, and we've allowed things to come in later. It's just very cumbersome for staff to deal with. You know, when we get things that are piecemealed, you know, and things, we might get an item the day before, we have to write a staff report to the planning commission. That's not enough time for staff to review that item. It could be a pretty, a pretty serious item, but that's just kind of the way things have gone in the past, and it was acceptable in the past. But at this point, we don't feel like it's acceptable.
Right.
And we're giving that pressure. We want quality to come out, but, you know, we're trying to transition into that type of quality as far as, in order for us to do that, we have to have complete applications. We have to have it all locked down from the beginning as far as what people are submitting. And then we'll do a thorough analysis and review of each development application, make a recommendation, you know, an educated recommendation based on the items that are submitted. The only thing I might recommend changing in this document, which I don't think it will be a problem because it's less than what is proposed in the document, I feel like it would be overly ambitious to review and, I quote, amend the subdivision regulations at this time. I don't think we need to lock ourselves into amending the regulation if the council's willing to consider this moratorium.
Can't you just put language in there that says, "Review and/or amend"?
Said that, too.
Yes. I mean, it's as simple as that.
They said to keep it, review.
And that is not, that's not something that I think would get the city in any trouble as far as notification departments or anything like that.
Well, it's not so much as getting a city in trouble. I think something of this magnitude needs to have a seven-day notice to the people.
It's had about six weeks.
No, no, it hasn't.
And advertising for that.
The original for this was, we were going to put it off, and we didn't necessarily think we were going to need it. And that's what everybody was thinking at the time. I've been asked a dozen times, I said, "Well, I don't think we're even going to have a moratorium, I think we're going to go a different route." Now, all of a sudden, now, I'm not saying we don't need a moratorium, but what I am saying is to push it through tonight, I think would be railroading it for a lot of people that would like to have a chance and opportunity to speak about it that aren't here tonight because they've got no idea it's going to be on the agenda tonight. I have no problems with the moratorium, I just feel it does need to be put off till the 22nd to discuss it and give us more time to look at the information so we can make a better inform, because the, frankly, as far as my part is, I don't necessarily remember. We talked about this back in September. I would like to refresh myself on what is going to be done so that we can make a better idea. And to be quite honest, I don't think two weeks is going to make a big deal to get everybody here to discuss it and talk about it.
You should see what two weeks looks like to Jonathan.
We waited this long.
Mayor, may I say something about that?
No, no.
Do you want to clarify that?
The, what about putting in a 10-day moratorium? Starting, if you put in a 10-day, that goes to the next meeting, and then you can have public input at the next meeting.
Well, that wasn't advertised, though, right?
That way, it's advertised and kind of a compromise.
Again, I just, I just, it sounds like I'm against it. I'm not against it, I just want that upfront. I just don't think it's fair to put something with the word "moratorium" because it scares the crap out of everybody. And I can understand that, but I think it just needs to be advertised so that we have at our next meeting, get everybody's input as far as what they want, and make a more informed decision on what, what we need to do. I truly do.
And what it includes.
Yeah, what it has, you know, what, because right now, you say, "Well, I think we may need to change this." Well, I need to see those changes before I vote on it. I need to know what, I need to know what we are going to do.
I just want to say quickly, on this, on this moratorium that was done in September and in your packets for November, you might need to review it again, but what he's saying is if there's a change, it's taking things away.
No, I understand.
So, it's making it more lenient, not as strict. So, if y'all were considering it in November as a serious item that you would say yes on, this one, if anything, will be more lenient. And it really is just giving us a break to put in and reviewing the regulations so they match with this huge development.
Again, I understand the purpose, and I'm not, I am not against that. I just feel that we just need, we don't need to do this tonight, all of a sudden, just get this thrown in. I just really don't, I don't think it's fair, and I don't think it's right, and I think we can put this off to the 22nd and get everybody an ample time to look at it and see what we need to do with it.
Counsel, I need you more.
Could we, I mean, following up on what you said, I, it's going to sound, I kind of agree with everybody at the table right now in one way or the other. I, I do agree with, with the proposal that we, that especially when you consider our sewage issues that we're looking at, that this is something we need to strongly consider. But I do agree that there's a lot of people that I think spoke out at that first, the first time it was brought up or planned to in September, I mean, prior to me being part of the council, that would probably like the opportunity to do it again. But I would like to consider what you said, is maybe, can we not put some sort of application freeze between now and then?
That's what the moratorium is. It's on applications. So, if you, if you...
Just so that we don't get just a planning dump in the next...
You give the planning department a 10-day reprieve, and then in 10 days, you can vote to make it permanent or vote to not implement it.
But is it a moratorium on all building permits? Is it just a moratorium without mine?
I don't think you could put a freeze on. I think it has to be done either by an ordinance, and it would be a moratorium. And a freeze, I've never heard of that being done.
I'm just asking, because I don't know.
Whatever the proper language is.
Right. I said freeze. I mean, moratorium obviously is the right word, but can we, I mean, I, you know, say in a 10-day moratorium, but that's never been published to the, to the public?
The moratorium that I understand was introduced, it was published and introduced, was a six-month moratorium. If that was decreased from six months to 10 days, I don't think that would be harmful to the public or to anybody involved because it's being reduced so substantially. If you were expanding it from six months to nine months, then I'd say you couldn't do it. But if you're, you're decreasing it, I think you could do it tonight.
Along those terms, you could also say, "This is the moratorium," and y'all can just know that it is going to be more lenient because it really is more about reviewing our regulations and doing the utility study. That's the main thing now. So, that's what it would be reduced to, whether or not it lasts six months or not, that could also be considered.
Yeah. It's actually been tabled. It was discussed and then it's tabled.
Right.
So, it is, you know, on the table.
Right.
I don't know. I need to, I need some feedback because if we're not going to put it on there, I need it to be told, and if we're going to put it on there, we're going to have to amend the agenda. So...
It has to be unanimous to amend the agenda.
If it's a, if it's a 10-day on high-density subdivision applications, I mean, I'd be fine, you know, just a 10-day until we have our...
It doesn't, it doesn't...
It's not going to, it's not going to... it's not going to.
It's not a multi-unit.
It has to be exactly the way it is for now, knowing that you can reduce it.
This is kind of my point, I keep saying if it's this or if it's that, we don't, we don't, we're voting on something, we don't got a clue what it's about. All I'm asking is, let's, let's put this right.
I think what you need to ask yourself is, when you talked about this the first time, when it was presented, and you were going to put it to the vote, and I said, let's wait, actually, because I do want to do things, you know, what were you thinking then? Because all we're doing now is taking this same thing and say, if anything, we might reduce it some.
I wish I could remember what I was thinking.
Really?
I swear. I need to reread, reread it. I mean, in essence, this got put on the back burner, so I've got to hold that to other things that were put on my mind.
Oh, I know, I know, but I mean, that's what we're saying is we do, we do know we've got serious issues.
I just would like to take a little time to make an informed decision on what we've gone over and it's only a.
Well, if we do this a 10-day temporary, it's giving you 10 days to study it, it's only 10 days, and it gives you 10 days to study it, and you're only holding up applications.
Can you do that?
It's not denying any, any.
I prefer to.
You're saying use this as a 10-day.
Use that one to reduce it.
And then do another one.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
The same one, it's just, you know, it's the same thing as tables, you're just in force for 10 days, and in 10 days, you can have a, you hopefully will have studied enough to be able to make a informed decision on a long-term.
Enough advertising.
So, yeah, you're not on a long-term. Would you be comfortable with that? That's all, it's only, we're only asking for 10 days.
I'm saying.
I'm with you, Kevin, I want to study it more as well, but I don't think making applications for 10 days is, is too long.
It's 10 days.
And I want to make sure every, every department's ready, sitting on go to address whatever needs we're supposed to be addressing. We're not spending two months getting somebody lined up to study.
I can guarantee you this, if we put it off for 10 days and don't put a temporary on there for 10 days, they're going to be, they're going to be happy.
Yeah, exactly, and we've already turned applications, I mean, we've turned them away and, and, you know, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. I mean, we're, our subdivision regulations state, if you receive an application that is incomplete, you return it back to the applicant. So, you know, I certainly don't want to have to waste staff resources going through these things, looking at them and saying, okay, they're incomplete, and then get the backlash from the development community, but that's just something we have to deal with. It's not a big deal as far as I'm concerned, but, you know, it will happen, we will get additional supplemental items and we'll be just busy. Because it's, it's just me and it's me and Nancy, our planner, and, and we do our best to do it, and we will, we'll continue doing what we can, and we always, I think, we agree with you on that. But if we leave it open, I'm confident we'll get several additional applications.
Well, you know, the other thing, I'm just sitting here thinking about, looking at this, this ordinance right now, is I'm torn between what I think is a good idea and the, and the desire to be transparent. And I'm worried that if we do this without having given people that I believe will have a desire to speak out against it, the opportunity to do that, I worry that that looks.
This is, this is what I recommend.
Well, it does, and that's why, you know, when the mayor said, public participation was important, that's why I say you're only taking a 10-day action.
Right, you're turning that into 10 days.
Into 10 days.
Yeah. Don't try to feel obligated to let, I mean, we're trying to put this on the agenda 10 minutes before the meeting.
Amen, bro.
There's not, no developer in town knows about this, no contractor in town, it's been talked about for months. But the last we heard was, we're using sewer systems to hold back development, and now we're going to put it on 10 minutes before the meeting, and nobody knows about it? You're talking about public participation and being able to speak at the meeting? So none of the developers.
You could put public participation on the next meeting.
Well, that's why I, that's why I only proposed 10 days. I mean, it was for, if I give 10 days to, you know, otherwise, you know, we might have been looking at something on my phone, that was my proposal.
10-day motion basically says you already made your decision and all you're doing, you don't care about public participation.
It's, it's not that we don't care, the public input is all I hear all day, to put the moratorium in.
All this hearing, like.
Right, but you would do that on the 22nd, I mean, the open hearing.
Okay. Counsel, we can handle it right now.
Come on.
Okay. Jimmy, you got any strong things?
I mean, I, I'm in favor of the moratorium, but I kind of feel the same as, I think, some of the other people. I, I'm in favor of it, but I think to slide it in 10 minutes in advance, I just think we'd get a lot of backlash. And I know if we don't, that's going to be a pile of extra stuff on Jonathan. But I think the appropriate thing to do is to probably put it on the agenda for 10 days from now and vote on it then.
Just know that whatever you receive has to be absolutely complete.
It has to be complete. I agree with that.
All right, all right, we got two descending on how many the agenda, so it's, it's a done deal for Jonathan. No sense in trying to take a vote to amend the agenda, because I'm here, two council members, and it doesn't take but one.
But I do think we need to.
Who are the two counts?
Well, this is not a formal vote.
I want.
We got, let's, let's stick to this, it's not, this is not, sorry, but this meeting is not vote participation.
Hey, Jonathan, can you, can you get that revised, whatever amended to us?
How you want.
This is actually a combination that this is, and I emailed this to y'all.
I'm not against the moratorium at all. I think things are going, are going haywire, but then again, the reason Jonathan's in the shape they are, the reason we're in the shape where we are today, is because of the N-word that was spoke out. And I got inundated by clients, everybody went into a panic mode. Now, look at, the big picture is, you're talking about 1,200 lots. That's not reality. You can't make, just because you, you get lots approved, doesn't mean you creating a market for 1,200 lots. But the market is the market. You're not going to go any, you're not going to go any faster just because you, you put more lots on.
What we want to do faster.
But there's some truth to that, but the deal is, is where we're all in a panic stage right now, is, is, and Jonathan's overloaded, we're getting comments at the last minute. We have three days to respond when that's not really an effective way professionally to submit something back and have a short timeframe in comments and everything else. There's a given fact with this, I promise you, before, if everything was just averaged out and the moratorium wasn't even mentioned, those lots would have come on the market but have been at a slower rate. And it'd probably been over a two or three-year period rather than on 60-year.
I still want to clarify that this is not last minute. We've been talking about this a long time, it has become a problem. We already have now all of the information you need to show, it's critical. Now, you wanting to wait a little bit more? Again, I just think all this is going to do is make a department that's already suffering, suffer more. Yes, we can have public participation, but I can tell you, the only thing I hear from citizens right now is, what are you going to do to help us? Okay? I'm not hearing from the developers, I mean, I'm just wondering if I, I mean, this is not, we have to become citizen-friendly. Four of us were voted in on the platform that we care about how we grow. So as far as a sense of urgency, how long do you want us to, to take? We've been in office over a month. You know? We need a moratorium because we are in emergency mode right now. If FEMA has already put us on the flood, I mean, what else do you want to hear? This is not going to, we have enough development to last us three more years without processing one more application. We're not stopping development. We are taking the time we need to protect our citizens, the ones that just voted us in not too long ago. And that's the only people we answer to. We don't answer to developers, I'm sorry. We answer to the citizens who voted us in. And developers are going to get what they need. But they're, they are also going to benefit because we're going to have regulations that it's going to be better for everybody, including the developers. I don't, we have to stop thinking, oh, if I say this, will it affect me this way and what will people think? The citizens have already determined what they want from us. Now we have to stand up and say, I'm going to listen to you and I'm going to vote this through. That's how I see it. If you want to put it off, that's fine, but again, it's 10 more days, I promise you, of unprecedented applications.
And Mayor, I agree with you on the moratorium issue, and the only mindset to me, I guess, is just in the interest of full transparency. There are developers that also are part of the community, and I feel like they would, they would feel like they got.
You have to think about everybody, and I agree with you.
I agree, and that's.
But developers, you have to say, you got developers right here which have already seen this whole campaign and know what people want. I mean, if you haven't, then you've been living under a rock. You've got the developers right here and a little, little hand, okay? And then you have the citizens here. It's good for everybody, whether or not there's a handful of people that think, you know what, I got to wait a little bit longer to do my development. You know, they might be mad at you, but they'll still vote for you because if they live here, they know it's the right decision.
Well, the one thing I got. The bottom line is, is, again, it's not a function of what we need to do, what the citizens want, it's a function of doing the right thing. And the right thing is not bringing something up of this magnitude, because this is big time stuff.
You should see what 20 has been through.
And we already know that from everybody, bringing it up 10 minutes before to add it to the agenda. And I agree with that statement.
Well, actually, I added it to the agenda the way I wanted it, but, you know.
Well, again, it was added last night, and it's not, that's not.
It was added and tabled in November.
Well, we all agree with that, Karen, though. I mean, we all said that.
I know, but it's not that it hasn't been brought up.
Take the time to say, hey, I want it done tonight. I don't think that's fair or right.
No, I said that, that's on y'all.
That's my whole point. It's not right, it's not fair.
It's not about putting it tonight, it's about, it's already been brought up, it's been a campaign. It was tabled over a month ago. This is not last minute.
Well, we'll have to disagree on that because I feel it is the last minute as far as the vote.
Counsel, we got, I got a couple more quick, really quick items. Kevin, you're not going to vote on the agenda, correct?
No.
Okay. You know, it's, it's a, we're not going to add it, we can't add it by law. The, two other things that come up just really quick, I need to poll the council real quick if I can. This came up past the required date last year. This was a contribution to the senior bowl. They've been calling the city every single day, wanting to know what we were going to do this year, to know, you know, have to schedule their practice. And so they want to know if we are going to donate $35,000 to them again this, this year. I personally voted against it last year. I love the senior bowl, I'm a member of the committee, my dad was MVP of the senior bowl one year, I love it. I just don't think that we get a return on that investment of $35,000. They were come, they came for, what, two decades without a donation. We spend thousands of dollars in resources in keeping the stadium in great shape for them. It's a great facility, it's grass, it's better turf, reduces injuries. I think that they should want to come here. It's a nice, clean, safe place to practice, and our citizens really like it, and they see it as a, you know, an amenity. However, I said in my piece, I want to poll y'all because we need to give them an answer. You know, do we have support to give them a donation this year? And this is well past the time which they were supposed to ask for.
Not worth $35,000.
Not still yet.
You're a yes or no?
I hate Fairhope to lose the opportunity to host a senior bowl practice here because I know there's a lot of people here that love, love that, and I know it brings some decent exposure to us and brings a lot of people over here. You know, if we're not agreeable at $35,000, I mean, is there any way that we could discuss maybe a lower number? I mean, is that a possibility? Who came up with?
Counsel, man, you can bring up any number.
Well, I mean, who came up with the $35,000? Where was that created?
They did, I asked, I asked, is Sherry here?
Plus expenses.
That's a committee, is that a committee?
I asked Sherry would they, and I believe the answer, you said it was no.
No, I haven't asked them about a lower amount.
Yeah, you said that they asked for $35,000.
They have, yes, well, right. Actually, I don't think I've asked, they haven't asked me for any amount. They just told me that they, when they called and said they would like to come before the city council, I talked to Lisa, I talked to Councilman Morell, and I told them, I asked if it was about asking for a donation, and they said yes. They did not give me a dollar amount. The last year we did do $35,000.
You told me $35,000.
I didn't.
We've given them $35,000 in the past.
One time. It's only been one time.
And where, who, who came up with that $35,000 that time? That was down to the ass.
They did, it was a last-minute thing, walked onto the agenda.
Well, I mean, if it, if it was one of those things that it wouldn't pass at 35, I don't know that I feel comfortable at 35, but I would like to at least entertain the idea of giving them something to keep, to make, ensure that we get that practice.
They also, I talked to Phil Savage, and he also talked about perhaps lowering the figure and looking for some sponsors to add to that, but that's just.
My recommendation is to turn it into a tourism-type thing. It can be benefit, beneficial for Fairhope, and it would warrant a donation, but unless we can show a positive impact on our economy, then it's not worth $35,000. I mean, it's an amenity, but $35,000 is a lot of money.
First, they get on the bus to come over to their practice, people are local, nobody goes downtown to shop and eat when the practice is over. They get on a bus, the players, do they go back to home building?
But don't they send kid, don't they send players to our schools every year that have?
Camp, I believe, during the summer, but the argument that they made was the rooms that are running. I called up Charlie Bassett last year at this time at Hampton Inn, he said that, you know, the practice doesn't generate any room nights, the game generates just literally a handful, maybe when Daphne fills up and they spill over into Faro, we may get a couple of rooms. The Grand Hotel gets some rooms there, some coaches, but I don't think that has anything to do with the practice. I think it has to do with the fact that they want to stay at a resort hotel with their family during the senior bowl event. And they've been doing that for decades. The fact that we donate money doesn't affect that.
Right.
From a tourism perspective, if we wanted to charter buses and offer transportation from Faro.
Well, to me, I think it's indicating ahead of time and seeing, well, how can we make this even better? And it could be better for them, more beneficial for us, and that's really, I think, the conversation that needs to be had.
I'd like to interrupt the conversation, but it's 6 o'clock and the city council meeting's supposed to start at 6 o'clock.
Do you have any, we have a district attorney on the matter, any thoughts on it?
I hate, I hate to shut them down completely and just say, we're not, we're guaranteed not to give you any money. I'd rather at least give them the opportunity to come and to talk to us.
We're actually violating our own rules and coming this late, that's why I brought it up here, it wasn't an agenda. It's our rules, and they, they're supposed to come back months ago.
They were told last year to have their letter in by June 1st.
And I guess it's enough.
And their letter came in now?
We didn't have a letter.
We don't even get a letter, we got verbal.
It's all. Rules are rules.
I didn't, I wasn't around here.
See us next year, Robert?
Get the letter in.
I think we can work on something really great for that.
So we can work together.